Before we get started this evening, we have the pleasure of having our Zion queens with us here this evening. Little Miss Zion, Journey Pearson, Junior Miss Zion, Rachel Harvey, Teen Miss Zion, Avery Shogren, and Miss Lake County of Zion, Sidney Peterson. So they're gonna come up. Thank you for gracing us with your presence this evening. They're gonna come up and they're gonna talk to us a little bit before City Council starts about the projects that they're working on. Who would like to lead the way? Oh, eight, oh, alright. Little Miss Zion, Journey Pearson, come on up and face the crowd and tell us what you're working on. Ignore him.
My name is Sidney Peterson, I'm Miss Lake County of Zion. I actually have a very big platform to fill this year. Started off with Zion, but now it's going to grow even bigger with Lake County, so I hope you guys will help me out. My platform is the Ron McDonald House and collecting pop tabs and items off their wish list this year. First with Zion is really wanting to focus on the items of the wish list. There's an Amazon wishlist, if you just look them up, the Ron McDonald House in Milwaukee. So we'll be collecting cookies, snacks, stuffed animals, anything that you guys can find out there, and I hope that you guys can help us. The Ron McDonald House is very special to me. My parents stayed there when my brother was sick in the hospital, and so it is very helpful that they were able to stay there right across the street instead of driving every day from Zion all the way up to Milwaukee to see him. So that is what they are there for. And then we also like to collect pop tabs. Last year, we donated 119 pounds of those tangle aluminum pop tabs and filled lots of buckets with them. They put it in for cash and then they help us do the same thing with the wish list. They buy different things for them to keep the house stocked for all of the guests that they have. Again, stuffed animals, toiletries, snacks, making dinners, being able to get the parents from the house to the hospital right across the street. So I hope that you guys will be able to help me collect those items. We'll be having dates set soon for a full collection days and collection spots for pop tabs. Thank you.
My name is Avery, I'm Team Miss Zion, and I am trying to work with Sherri Neal to hold a Type 1 run in the summer because my brother has Type 1 diabetes and he's had it since he was very young. And to be able to raise money and try and find a cure so that he can feel better would be great.
Thank you.
Okay, well, as a group with Rachel, we want to do maybe a tea party or a mystery game night at the Shadell House. She has awesome ties with the house with her grandmother, and so we love to host all of our little bitsy others that we do there, and we want to do some sort of mystery who do kind of game night there, just to see, and so maybe we can have some people together. Another thing that we're going to be doing coming up very soon is going to be Mother's Day pin flowers, where we get together other queens or other volunteers that want to come out and help us. We just make these little cloth flower pins and we give them out to the Rolling Hills funeral home, just for all mothers and foremothers. So we hope that you guys can help us out with everything that we all have planned this year. We do at least one, or maybe if not all of our lovely projects that we have set for the year.
Alright. Oh, absolutely. Let's all, everyone, let's go out and get a picture with the pointies. Let's see. Here we go. Perfect. And then you're gonna, then you're gonna join me, all of you are gonna be up here, you know, if you have some different roles.
You guys just turn a little bit for the camera for our viewers. Okay, I got you all in there. That's good. You don't want to hurt your feet?
Oh, absolutely.
Right there, 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 one more, right there. Hey, Mom, we're taking pictures. You know?
Thank you, Queens. Come on up, walk in with me this way. I'm gonna have Journey sit in my chair, and I'm gonna tell you what you're gonna do. Alright, Journey, you're gonna have a seat here. There you go. Slide you in there, and then what I want you to do, and I want you to take this gavel and just wrap on it, just like that. And then, Rachel, when she wraps on the gavel, I want you to say, I'd like to call this February 21st regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Okay, gavel. Alright, grab that gavel there and wrap on it so everybody can hear it. Two more, three times, go, whap, whap, whap.
Give it a good one.
Go, go. Like you're, like you're nailing something.
Go hard.
And Rachel is going to say, go ahead.
I call this meeting...
This regular meeting?
This regular meeting.
This February 21st?
February 21st.
Of Zion City Council to Order.
Zion City Council to Order.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
It said, Madam Clerk, roll call. Madam Clerk, roll call. Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here.
And now Sidney Peterson, Miss Lake County of Zion, you're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much. It's so great to see that our young kids are doing special things in our community. It's a great start to leadership, future leadership, and we look forward to them sitting in our seats, or different big position seats, at one point in the future. Pastor Dave Adams is here from New Song Ministries to offer prayer this evening.
This prayer. Father in heaven, we thank you once again for bringing us back to the table here. Father, I thank you for, as always, I thank you for these leaders, or thank you for Mayor McKinney. Lord, thank you for what a wonderful driving force he is in our community. He's, and we just pray for your blessings on him, Father, for health, for wisdom. Lord, I thank you for who surrounds him right now, Lord. I thank you for these commissioners, for their faithfulness, for their hard work, for their thoughts and dreams, Lord, for their passions. I thank you, Lord, for their service and their hours that go on toll. We pray, Lord, for this team. We thank you for the diversity of them. We thank you for the differences that they bring to the table, but at the end of the day, Lord, I pray that you bring unity into this room. Father, I pray that you bless this team, this city council, with a burden of longing for the health and the well-being and the security of our city. I pray that you would give them an understanding of the needs, and I pray that you would give them empathy and sympathy and wisdom in how to lead their people. And now, Father, we thank you for this night, that we can even be here in this way. Lord, you blessed us with the great freedom. And now, Father, we live this night unto you, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Adams. Are there any agenda changes for this evening? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Fryerson, second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five, the citizens' comments. We have with us Ken Endress.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am here representing the commanding officer of Naval Station Dry Lakes. Just wanted to say that now that the community is opening up more, hopefully representatives from the naval base will be helped in your community more often. But I have a second reason, is that I will be leaving this post as community liaison officer as of the end of March, and so the next time I come back in here, I'll be coming back as your citizen living in Zion, and I'm looking forward to that. If there's things that the city needs to interface with the base, there is still a position, as I said, I'll be there until the end of March, and be happy to entertain and pass that on to the commanding officer, Captain Williamson. So I appreciate the time that I've spent here in the past, and I look forward to being with you frequently in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your commitment and working with the city of Zion. Pastor Dave Adams, and we would all like to continue to pray for you and your health, and that your life continues to be fulfilled in the manner of your choosing. So, thank you. Item number six, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on February 7th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on February 7th, 2023 at 8:03 p.m.
Is there a motion for the approval of minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Clerk, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Bills vouchers 142514 through 142595 drawn on Huntington National Bank, total $1,125,723.40.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
All move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip.
Item number seven, consider passing ordinances as follows. Excuse me. Item 7A, extending a special use permit for a 2.5 megawatt direct current to megawatt alternate current fixed tilt ground mounted community solar project per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Zion CBS LLC is requesting 100 million day extension to the special use permit for the community solar project to the property located at 2700 and 2966 Seventeenth Street. They have received two extensions and orders, 1101 and orders 22088. They are still wishing for the funding from the state and anticipating response within 9200 days.
Alright, is there a motion to extend the special use permit?
So moved.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip.
Item 7B, approving and authorizing a first amendment to a redevelopment agreement between the city of Zion and Imperiant LLC per Attorney Vaselli.
Good evening, Chair and Council. Before you tonight is an extension of the redevelopment agreement between the city and Imperiant LLC. It tracks the amendment recently completed between the city and North Shore Sanitary. In sum, it extends all applicable deadlines for one year. We respectfully request your approval of the same. Thank you very much.
Is there a motion to approve the first amendment to a redevelopment agreement?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Fryerson. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip.
Item eight, discussion authorization approval, 8A, consider approval of street and bridge and motor field tax budgets per Director Conway.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, commissioners. In the interest of moving forward the necessary IDA paperwork in the bid process, I am presenting both the street and bridge budget and the motor fuel tax fund budget for fiscal year 2024, for consideration in advance of the remainder of the city funds. As these funds are standalone funds and have no impact on the general fund or other fund budgets, we can isolate and approve accordingly. I recommend approval of these budgets as presented for the year ending April 30th, 2024.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the street and bridge and motor field tax budgets per Director?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Congratulations, you just made your first official act.
Thank you.
Before the city council.
Thanks.
And I didn't forget to call you today.
Departmental, we'll see.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item 8B, tabulation of bids, cleaning and maintenance services for city hall, police administration, and public works per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city received four bids and only three responsible bidders for the cleaning maintenance service for city hall, police administration, and public works. Chi Town Cleaning Services, $45,360; Multi-System Management, $47,260; Hemorrhage Facility Services, $55,000. Half is remanded, recommending the lowest responsible bidder, Chi Town Cleaning Services, for $45,360.
Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item 8C, discussion and possible final action regarding bids for real property commonly known as 20811 Elisha Avenue and 2813 Elisha Avenue, City of Zion, Illinois, per Attorney Vaselli.
Good evening, Chair and Council again. Pursuant to state statute, when the city sells property in the manner as presented by this act, the purchase must be made through bids open at a city council meeting. We would appreciate a two, a three-quarters vote acknowledging, I believe, Madam Clerk, there were no bids submitted.
Correct.
We'd like a two-thirds vote acknowledging the lack of all bids, and at which time we will then be able to negotiate with a contract purchaser pursuant to state law.
Alright, is there a motion? Do we need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Any questions or comments? Alright, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five oh. Item 8D, consider appointment of FOIA officers per Mayor McKinney.
We get a lot of FOIA requests and from the city, and usually our clerk usually takes that responsibility in addition to all the other things that we've done, and try to alleviate some of the work, and where a lot of the FOIA requests are, we are looking to appoint FOIA officers, Christopher Sweeting from the Zion Police Department, Derek Zalodek from the Alternate Police, Paul Curly, Lieutenant Curly from the Alternate Police, and Tasha Obregon from the Fire Department. Is there a motion to consider the appointments of our FOIA officers?
So moved.
So moved by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip.
Item number nine, departmental commentary. Director Ianson?
Thank you, sir. Head up duty in Waltham Charbox yesterday, and they're making great progress with the interior buildout. They're anticipating they'll be done in the next two or three weeks, so we should see Robert's open real soon in the future.
Great. Thank you for that, Director Ianson. Director Roberts is not here, not feeling well tonight, so we keep him in our thoughts that he feels better. Chief Streep?
Well, good evening, Mayor. I always like that smile. And good evening, commissioners. Just a little bit of an activity update. We have had four somewhat substantial structure fires in the last two weeks alone. That's an abnormally large amount for that short of time, so we just urge, well luckily, everybody from those fires has escaped without injury, so that's a good thing. But we do want to put the reminder out, number one, for smoke alarms, we urge our residents and visitors to make sure their smoke alarms are working. But also, a couple of those fires appear to be caused by electrical problems, and we just urge everybody, if you think you're having any type of electrical issue inside of your home or garage, get that checked by a professional before it becomes a large problem. So we stand ready to serve the city, but four large structure fires within a couple week stretches is a lot for us, and a little abnormal, so we hope to not see that type of activity in those numbers anytime soon.
Thank you, Chief. And along those lines, I just always like to remind our residents that when it snows and we have a significant amount of snow, to make sure that someone in your neighborhood takes the responsibility of digging out the fire hydrant. Just the having access to the fire hydrants for our police department and our emergency personnel can make a big difference in the matter of saving a structure or a lot of mass destruction, a lot of destruction. So, simple request. Fortunately, we haven't had a great deal of snow this year, and spring is rapidly approaching. Also, Chief, don't we have a program in which we give smoke detectors out to our homeowners, our...
Grave minds think alike. Administrator Naval just asked me the same exact question. Yes, yes, we do.
Our greeting lips.
We, the details are on our website, but we provide our homeowners, not just giving them an alarm, but we will come out and install that for them. So I would urge anybody to get in touch with us. The phone number and email address is on our website. Be happy to hear from you.
Alright, thank you. Chief Streep? Chief Barton?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
I wish the next chief streeter's men, they already put a smoke detector in my house. I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Bremer?
Just a couple of quick things. A reminder for crime stoppers, we're always willing to take those tips through that portal. We have been successful with several cases utilizing this stuff in the past. Look up Lake County Crime Stop, which are 847, 662, 2222. And then tomorrow, or this evening into tomorrow, we're anticipating a snow slash ice storm, so tomorrow's commute's gonna be probably a little bit difficult. I believe the snow and rain, freezing rain is anticipated to start somewhere in the neighborhood of 6:00 a.m. and probably go through 24 hours or so. So if that is the case, remember to provide an extra distance between the cars or vehicles around you to make sure you get to wherever you're going safely, and if you can avoid traveling during inclement weather, please do that.
Alright, thank you. Chief Barton? Director of Public Finance?
Thank you, Mayor.
Chris Conway?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. First of all, thank you for the donuts yesterday morning from CJ's Coffee House. Those were fantastic.
You're welcome.
Second, we have put an offer out and had it accepted for our administrative assistant position. She's gonna go through all the pre-employment checks. If everything works out okay, we hope to have her in here in the next two to three weeks.
Alright, thank you. Administrator Naval?
Thank you, Mayor. My departmental commentary today isn't so much about the city as it is about somebody that serves the city. He's talked a lot about his accomplishments in DC lately, and the trips that he's done and the work he's done on behalf, but he shared recently a pretty amazing accomplishment that I wanna give some history on, so feel free to give me patience here as I read through. I may have stole a press release off his desk.
Safe.
Northwestern announces Billy McKinney jersey retirement during the 23-24 season. Northwestern Athletics and Recreation and the Wildcats Men Basketball Program announced Sunday that one of the greatest student athletes in the history of the university, Billy McKinney, 1973 to '77, I could've left that out later. Will have his jersey retired during the 23-24 basketball season at Wells Ryan Arena. McKinney will be the first student athlete in school history to have their jersey retired. Considered by many the best player in Northwestern history, McKinney scored 1,900 career points, a school record that stood for 35 years, and led the Wildcats in scoring each season of his career. His 768 made field goals still stand as the program's all-time record. McKinney earned all Big Ten recognition in all of his four seasons and garnered first team, all-conference, and all-American honors as a senior when he averaged 21.3 points a game. A Wildcat has not made 17 or more field goal attempts in a game since McKinney, when he posted 37 points against Notre Dame in 1974. Under head coach Tex Winter, McKinney was named the first three-time team MVP in program history from 1975 to '77. I, I, I can't help it. The Zion, Illinois native also suited up for the Northwestern basketball team, earned his degree in education in 1977, and was inducted to the Northwestern Athletics Hall of Fame in 1986. After his collegiate career, McKinney enjoyed an eight-year playing career in the NBA, '78 to '85, with the Kansas City Kings, Utah Jazz, Denver Nuggets, San Diego Clippers, and Chicago Bulls. Averaging eight points, 1.4 rebounds, and three and a half assists per game eclipsed in 3,800 career points and 1,600 career assists. Due to his quickness, McKinney was nicknamed the crazed hummingbird, which I am gonna be using now. He still holds the NBA rookie record for the most field goals without a miss, converting 14 straight attempts in a 30-point outburst against the Boston Celtics. Following his professional playing career, McKinney served as an executive and scout in NBA front offices for over 30 years. While working as a Bull scout, McKinney was the only scout to watch Scottie Pippen play in...
Arkadelphia.
Arkadelphia. Thank you. Arkansas guiding his team to trade for Pippen in 1987, and formed one of the NBA's greatest dynasties with Michael Jordan. He was the first African-American front office executive in franchise history. McKinney became the first general manager of the expansion Minnesota Timberwolves in 1992, and later worked as a GM for the Detroit Pistons and the WNBA Seattle Storm. As the director for scouting for the Milwaukee Bucks, McKinney was instrumental in drafting...
Yana Sodatumbo.
In 2013, before playing, before his playing career began, described the 18-year-old as a hybrid of Magic Johnson and Kevin Durant. Since 2019, McKinney has served as the mayor of his hometown, Zion, Illinois. The NU great is still heavily involved with the program as the team's radio color analyst along the voice of the Cats, Dave Annett, on WGN Radio 720. NU DAR annually presents the Billy McKinney Award to the male student athlete who has exhibited exemplary leadership qualities, constant 110% effort, and a positive attitude that in his coach's estimation makes him a coach's dream. And that carries on in his service here to Zion, and I thought everyone needed to know that honor that was bestowed on him, so... on him. So.
All right.
That's my commentary.
Thank you, Administrator Naval.
I'll make a comment. You've been given the score while you've been giving the votes. Five zip.
Oh, yeah. Old habits die hard.
With five minutes left in the city council meeting. Departmental commentary?
I'm not going to follow that. Except to say, thank you for being our mayor.
Yeah, thank you. The speech? I'll wait till the end. It'll be very brief.
I have no, we'll see. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. All right.
I think we've covered just about everything. Snow's coming. Be careful, you know. I think we've covered about all the bases on that.
City Hall's closed tomorrow.
Oh, City Hall is closed tomorrow, yes. Very brief speech. Dave, thank you for reading that. I got through hearing that without crying for the first time. And I've got to say, I was surprised by the announcement last Sunday when we played the University of Iowa, the 5:30 game. And I thought that I was going out on the court for a, in February, Northwestern's always had recognition for their alumni during Black History Month. Last year, they did a really nice piece on me, which surprised me, and I thought they were going to do much of the same. So my reaction when I heard the announcement was I burst into tears. And I just, I'm still processing what that all means. The university was formed in 1851, and to be the first player to have their student athlete, to have their jersey retired is, it's quite an honor. It really is. And I'm finally able to talk about it without the rivers running down my cheeks. And I'll say this, I've been very fortunate that my jersey hangs in, over at Zion Bid and High School, and Gibby always likes to take photo of that. My jersey was retired in 1984. I've always had a tremendous pride from being from Zion, being raised here, and always trying to represent our city in the best fashion possible. And as I went away to college, I had to leave the cocoon of Zion and the success that I had here and start all over. And I've got to tell you, when I first walked on campus, I was scared out of my mind. But fear is a great motivator, and it's always been the fear of failure is one of those things that's really always motivated me to try to do my very best, not only on the court, off the court, in my job as mayor. I appreciate the recognition. I am humble, honored, and I'm grateful for all the opportunities that have presented themselves here in the city of Zion, and while I was at Northwestern University, and all that have come after. And I'll say this to all of our kids. My mother, who raised six kids by herself on a sixth-grade education, always told me about the importance of education. She said, "Get an education," or she wasn't specific. She probably didn't have the specific words, but "get an education." And when I look back at getting a quality education from Northwestern, being the first person in my family to go to college, I think about what has afforded me, and that's been economic and social mobility. Everyone should strive for that, economic and social mobility. And this all starts through getting an education, whether it's a degree, whether it's in the trades. And we got a beautiful trade center at our high school for kids to learn at now. Educate yourself in the best way you possibly can, and give yourself a fighting chance to be able to have some success in life. And that success is determined by your standards, not anyone else's. So again, Dave, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your support of the job that I'm doing as a mayor. And I just, again, I always, I tell this to people that ask me, "What is, what is it like being in politics at this time?" And I said, "I have the best city council members and the best department heads and the best people working with me." And I know through team work, what I've been trained in my entire life, you don't have success without people supporting you. You can't do it alone. And I thank all of you for all the successes that we've had in our city and will continue to have. I know that wouldn't be possible without the help of all of you that are here and those that work on behalf of the city of Zion. So, thank you. Last thing I'm going to say, my dad always left me, even though my mom and dad were divorced, my mom, my dad always told me three things. He said, "Son, if you want to be seen, stand up. If you want to be heard, speak up. If you want to be loved, shut up and sit down." So with that, we move on to item number 10, is announcements. On March 7th at 6:00 p.m., we have a Zion Township Board meeting. And following that, on March 7th, we have, at 7 o'clock, Zion City Council meeting. On March 21st, there, and March 21st, excuse me, at 6 o'clock, and the city council meeting at 7 o'clock, they will be canceled due to early voting. And again, I want to reiterate to our citizens that we work with the county, and they use our city of Zion as a polling site. And we have to go by the guidelines that they establish for people to get out and to vote. And we want our citizens to get out and vote in this upcoming election. We have two of our commissioners that are up for election, Commissioner McDowell and Commissioner Holmes, and myself, we're up for reelection. And I just urge everyone to get out and vote. It's a privilege to be able to vote in this country, and people gave their lives for people to be able to have voting rights. So whatever your vote may be, just get out and vote and be able to have some say in the people that lead your city. Item number 11 is closed sessions pursuant to 5ILCS 120-2, open meetings for the discussion of filed pending and/or probable or imminent litigation, sale or purchase of real estate, collective bargaining, legal counsel, and personnel. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
And second by Holmes. She beat you to it quietly. Commissioner, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip.
Please, all the department heads, Mr. Gibby, the sergeant back there accompanying with taking care of the things in that box there.
Oh, absolutely. Yes. Mr. Barton, before we go, yes, we have some treats that Mr. Berman brought us this evening. And I don't want anyone to box the names.
Puchkes.
Puchkes. So we have several boxes of that, and?
Twenty of them, twenty total.
Twenty total. And I know Chief Barton has already claimed eight of them. My man. Everybody, thank you for coming tonight, and please be safe tomorrow.